Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh three and I'm calling this meeting into order. This meeting is being recorded. Councilwoman Fareed? Could you do the invocation? Hi, Councilwoman Fareed, could you do the invocation? Please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Father God, thank you for this time to come together to do the business of the city of Glen Arden. We ask that all hearts and minds will be clear as we look to further the interests of the city. Let our discourse be civil, let our objectives be clear, and let our work be fruitful. We thank you for all the support and do the great things.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clark, can you do the roll call, please? Madam Clark? Can you all hear me?
I can hear you. Can we just do it ourselves?
I can hear you. I think something may be wrong with her audio because you can see that she's not looking.
Oh, okay. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Guo?
Here.
Councilman Harrison?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson, I'm here and Councilman Curtis is absent today. We have six in attendance. Is there a motion to adopt agenda?
No motion.
A second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. I guess. Do we take the roll call?
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes. Any discussion? Madam Clark, can you take the roll call to accept agenda?
On the board, Madam President, Vice President, I have my hand up for discussion.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Jones, proceed.
Can we include in topics of discussion the letter that was sent to the council on three, I think it was March tenth, concerning the citizens at Glen Arden Towns?
Okay. I can't hear them.
What was it? Again, Councilwoman?
The letter that was sent to the council on March the tenth concerning the Glen Arden Towns residents.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, could you take the roll call, Madam Clark, to accept the agenda?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Guo?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, with the addition of the letter from the Glen Arden Towns citizens.
All right, and Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And the council president will not be able to join us this evening. You have a quorum.
Thank you. So, first on the agenda, is the legislation a resolution to establish a farmer's market in the city of Glen Arden? Is there, are there any questions or discussions concerning this legislation?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring, you see?
Yes, I think it's a good idea. I'm glad we're doing it, but I looked at the legislation. And I think that ninety day timeline is entirely too short. I went to the Maryland State Department of Agriculture website and they actually have the steps for starting a new farmer's market. And there's a lot of steps involved, including getting permits from the county, getting approval from the state, getting approval from the health department. So that's all not going to be done in ninety days. And from me speaking to farmers at various farmer's markets, they always say that, you know, they usually make their schedules at least almost a year in advance where they're going to be and where they're going to set up. So getting farmers established for this farmer's market probably won't, probably may even take about a year or either well into the fall and you may get the fall harvest, what's coming due in the fall. So I think the timeline on here, that ninety day timeline is too short. Also, we had a brand new city manager on board and I think that's a lot for her to take on board. As just coming in. Another thing is the committee, the steering committee. It says that the city manager should be the chair of the committee and shall approve the three resident members. And no, our charter requires the council, the mayor and council to appoint all committee members. So that really, that can't be done, you know, based on what our charter has in there. I'm not understanding why the market would be considered enterprise operation for the city of Glen Arden because I don't think we really should be trying to make money off of it. I think it should be an opportunity for farmers, especially black farmers, to be able to sell their product. I don't believe we should have fees and all this other stuff that goes with it, but that can come, that's that can come down to more discussion.
I'm sorry.
I'm also looking at the twenty, the twenty-five thousand dollars. What is that for? You know, yeah, what is that for?
I'm sorry, Council Vice President, Councilman Herring, can we take each of these points and discuss them rather than kind of go through?
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Yes, if you would, Councilman Herring.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the ninety day, let me start all over. Let me start all over.
Yes, so the ninety day one was what you started with and let me just say, and certainly other comments, I'm fine with that. I put an aggressive timeline just for us to start to have something to work from. I don't want this to be something where we put a legislation forward and then it's years before we do anything. So I'm fine to put a different timeline. We can just, you know, we can change that. I'm not, I'm not wed to the ninety days, but, you know, the co-sponsors, you know, whatever, how you feel.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Herring.
Okay. And also.
So sorry, should we, should we ask the city manager for what she might think is a reasonable timeframe? And maybe, maybe we should phase it or maybe we should order it, like what activity will be completed when, like a timeline? Would that be helpful, Councilman?
Should we maybe post the resolution? Oh.
Councilperson?
Post it?
I mean, not post it, you know, just share it. I mean.
Oh, share it.
I think. May I, Council President? This is Councilwoman Guo. I was just, I was just agreeing, saying that I think it would be a good idea if the clerk shared the screen, so.
Yeah.
Can everyone see it?
It needs to be a little bigger. If we can't.
All right, let's see.
Then open the, up at the top, the box up on the upper right.
The square next to the X.
The square next to the X.
Above.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Herring?
Yeah. So, yeah, we can go to page two. So item number, yeah, again, but item number two where it says that the city manager shall select members for the committee, that's actually up to the council, mayor and council per the charter. All committees will be established and all committee members will be voted on and approved by the council. So those three members are coming from the city. Coming from the city.
Sorry.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I think that's fine. I just, to be honest with you, I just don't want this to end up, again, being a situation where we have a steering committee that never gets filled. We have other committees in the city, like the advisory, et cetera, and these committees remain unfilled for various reasons, but I that's why I put it, you are right, you are right.
I think it's just a matter of us bringing legislation, picking somebody, because the council or the mayor can, can appoint people. It isn't like we got to wait for the mayor to do it. If we know people that want to do it, we can just throw them up in that position.
Okay. I have a dear post sponsor.
What line was that, Councilman Herring?
It's item number two where it says the city manager shall be the chair of the committee and shall approve the three resident members.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess the next item is the enterprise operation. So we're saying it's going to be a moneymaker for the city?
Yeah, because if we disagree, then we can take that out.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, because you need to get started. You just basically trying to get people to come because a lot of the farmers, like I say, farmers I've talked to at these various farmer's markets, they want to make sure that there's a, you know, there's going to be customers. They're going to be able to make money. They, I mean, some of the ones I've talked to have come from eastern shore and as far as the Virginia, North Carolina line to come up to the different farmer's markets. And like I said, I know DC got twenty-two farmer's market, you know, and they, they want to make sure that if they come in all this way that they can make money off of it. And I don't think that, you know, right at this point in the now, when it's starting so early and get, trying to get one established, you know, having fees and trying to make money off of it would not be a good idea because they're not going to want to put out the money if they're not sure they're going to make any money, make any money off of the location. So I was just wondering, what was the thought, I mean, what the thought was of making it an enterprise operation? But, I mean, it's up to, you know, the council if they want to, you know, keep that in there. I just think we need to just give opportunities to them, especially farmers who have it hard anyway with farming in general. But I mean, I'm just, just questioning that. I don't, whatever the council wanted to do, that's fine with me. And that next time is item number four, the steering committee shall be allocated twenty-five thousand dollars from the city's reserves. And I'm trying to figure out what is the twenty-five thousand dollars for?
For operating the space, so if, if anything, well, first we need to figure out where it's going to be, right? So if the space needs to be made fit for it, like having some sort of a tent awning, you know, whatever is needed to get that operational. Tables for, you know, for the people who are going to be selling his stations, if we, if we need to get point of sale machine. You know, like you don't just say come to the farmer's market and then all the farmers come in. If there's some setup involved with it, so that's what that would be for.
Well, most farmer's markets I went to, they had their own POS system and, you know, and, and, you know, because a lot of them are hooked up to their phones. There's no electricity where we're going, where it is or wifi or anything else. They normally had their own POS, you know, that they operate through their phone.
Yes, there's a couple of ways that it could be done. And, and when we get to point eight, we can talk a little bit more about that because the facilitation of being able to accept things like SNAP and WIC may not be in the, may not be something that an individual farmer can do, but something that we as a city will want to offer as a benefit. And so therefore, we would need machines to be set up that way. But if you think that number is too high, then, you know, we can certainly lower. But that was an initial starting point with the committee presenting then a detailed operating budget so we could see. So if they come up, you know, whatever they decide as the operating budget, we could see if it's five thousand dollars and it, you know, then we wouldn't get fifty-five if it's only five.
Yeah, I was just wondering what it was for, because again, like I said, if we, if we're going to be buying terminals for them to use, well, terminals for them using, I mean, we have to set up the merchant account, which means the money will be going into our bank account, which means that's an additional step where we have to basically cut them checks. And I don't think we, if we're going to, we need to separate the whole thing. If they're a business, then they're a business and we don't need to be involved in any of that.
Right.
So that's, that's just my thing. And then, okay, you wanted to speak on, I didn't, I didn't have any questions on number eight. I know, I mean, I agree with, you know, the petition to being able to take, you know, SNAP, WIC and other kind of forms of payment. I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Just like you said, the logistics of them being able to do it is what we have to look at.
Right.
Again, like number nine is, is having a fee for the farmer's market. And I'm just like, at this point, what I was just trying to start a new farmer's market, just to attract vendors to even come here, who have never come here before. You know, I think asking for a fee would probably deter them from coming. I think most of, most of the ones that do come that I know of from farmer, farmer's markets, they either have their own setup. They have the tables, they have the chairs, they have everything that they need to set up. And they used to have a really huge one under, under the metro tracks on Benny Road. I don't know if it's still there, but that's the one I used to, used to always go to and I would talk to them and they would bring everything that they needed for, you know, to sell their wares. So.
Well, I just forgot our code. It was, the vendors were required to pay fees. We could waive those fees, but I thought if, if anybody wanted to sell something in the city of Glen Arden, they had to pay the vendor fee for that.
If, if, the thing is, the city is sponsoring it, you know, we don't, we don't have to collect a fee if we're sponsoring an event. I mean, we have, you know, events now where, you know, I mean, we, I mean, we had something we can look at. I mean, yeah, we can, we may have to do a resolution, yes, like you say, just to waive it altogether. If the charter's requiring it, even though it's something that we're putting on, so we can look at that and see. But I do think that if we do do, I mean, if we do do it, I presume it looks like we're going to do it. I think the best place to do it would be over there on a bank parking lot, over there between the hairdresser and the church. All that city property. There's a bank there, so it's got a parking lot there, it's level. I think it'd be easily accessible for people who are disabled.
Yeah.
And it's on a major highway that gets a lot of traffic, which is what they're going to be looking for.
That's the space that Mr. Simpson and I had looked at as well. Mr. Simpson is on the call, but there, there would be some stuff that needed to be done to that area. I think part of that, that pavement is like cracked up and has like grass growing through it. But I think some of, it would need to be some kind of work done to get that to be a nice place to have it. And I think there was a question, Mr. Simpson, correct me if I'm wrong, what we needed to get clear exactly on where the line is with the church?
Yes, Madam Councilwoman Fareed, good evening. Just to make sure what our boundaries are, I wasn't able to clearly say where they started and ended.
Yeah, I mean, the boundary is really, I mean, it's a, it's a nice sized piece of property. The boundary is small when it comes to the church. When you come from the side of the church out, I think it's, I don't know, I mean, it's not many feet, it's not very wide. But the lot, the Glen Arden property is larger than, is a nice sized piece of property over there. Again, like I said, a church lot, church lot. You know, because normally they would ask us if they wanted to use any part of that lot over there because they know that the lot is very, is restricted. Most of their lot is on, in the front and the back. Where they have, they used to have parking in the back. So, I mean, we can look at that and see, but I don't think the, I don't think the church comes too far over onto this bank property. So that's something to look at, but again, it's just starting out. You know, you, man, but so many vendors just starting out. But I think, you know, location wise and traffic wise, you know, I think they'd be more apt to come if they could say, you know, we can say, okay, we're, we're on seven oh four and you, it's just like a, you know, a thousand cars, a hundred me cars an hour riding up and down a highway daily, you know, and they see people may be more apt to stop and, 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 you know, purchase their wares. So, I mean, because all the other locations to me are hidden and that's what, you know, most farmer's markets, farmers don't want is a hidden location because they can't sell much. Because it won't be open to a mass, a larger audience, I mean, a larger customer base. So, I mean, that's all I had on it. That's, I mean, other than that, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Any other comments or concerns? On this legislation?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
I agree with Councilwoman Fareed concerning that lot next to the bank, but I'm sure we could use PG Atlas or have one of the, PG Atlas is, is used by code enforcement to determine where property lines are. So I'm sure we could use them to find out exactly where that is. And, and we, I think we, if we're going, if we are going to determine to use that lot, that it would need to be, we need to know how big that space is. Because for farmer's market, you want everybody to have enough room to be able to display and sell their, their items. Thank you.
Is this the area between the church and the, the side of the boyette's hair salon? Where they had, is that like where they had those dumpsters where you, where you drop off clothes and stuff like that, that area?
Yes.
Yes, but those dumpsters are gone.
Yeah, but that's, that's that little area, that area right there is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
But I think, I think also what we need to do is, Madam President, if I?
Yes, you may.
Yeah. We need to actually, the, the property was surveyed and the survey should be somewhere up in that building. But if it wasn't, then we may have to just pay it for a survey because PG Atlas is a good idea of where you're going, but they've always told me that it's not, it's not the actual last, the last could be off a little bit. So if we really want to be sure where the property begins and ends, we may just want to just get a complete survey on the property. It probably needs to be surveyed anyway, but it has, and I know it has been surveyed before. So if it isn't up there, we probably want to survey it to just make sure we don't have no issues whatsoever if somebody's going to claim that we're on their property and we actually are on a city property. So I think that might be the best thing for us to do.
And that probably be like a line item for the detailed operating budget in point four, right? Because the survey is probably going to cost three thousand dollars.
I think they really do need to just check up there because we had all of the city property and that's a buildable lot. So I know that was surveyed.
So something like that would be could be included in operating, coming out of that budget?
The part of the survey. Yeah, that's the idea, like whatever we need to spend to get the space to be suitable for the market.
But, but I, I also think that the property needs to be surveyed anyway. Even for auditing purposes, it should be surveyed. So we don't have a survey for, we can just have the survey. That's something we should have in our records anyway, on where the location of the property is. So the budget we're looking at is for twenty twenty-four. We need to, I mean, we want to survey, survey it and we're trying to move forward with this. We need to survey it now. It isn't like we can't use it, use that information somewhere else. I mean, we need it for the audit anyway, so it's a buildable lot. So they may want to survey and they don't get it appraised also. But I think we, I think there should be some money in the budget somewhere now where we can go ahead and do a survey on that piece of property.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Jones?
And most properties that have been surveyed, they leave stakes. So if, if Public Works can't find the stakes anywhere that gives you an indication as to where they were, yeah, it really does need to be re-surveyed.
Okay. Are there any other concerns, questions or comments on this legislation? Okay, some good discussion, hearing none. Next on the agenda, oh, we didn't even do the, I skipped over the, the minutes. I'll go back on that, the minutes. We have the minutes, March sixth, the work session, March fourteenth, the public hearing, March fifteenth, special regular session, and March twentieth, regular session. We have those meeting minutes and can go with them and discuss and or prepare for voting on April seventeenth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we're going to go with the, we have the mayor, the reports, the mayor report, the acting, the city manager's report, chief of police treasure report. We all have that, those. Anyone have any comments or concerns? Convention in this meeting, if not?
Yes, I just want to ask a question because there's some confusion out here. Are we having two Easter egg hunts? Or just one?
As far as I know, and we can hear from Councilwoman Fareed, we have, we're having one, the city's having one, and that would be on our property.
Okay, because somebody, somebody just read me something that said they're going to have it, having one at Glen Arden Community Center?
Yes, there's an advertisement that was put out by Mayor Cross. And I think it's with the fraternity. She she used the, the city seal and her, and her, her name, Mayor, I think it's Cross. I don't, I don't know anything further than that, but it's on, you know, on the parking plan and property. And the only thing that I know of, I don't know whether it's any funding or anything, but the only thing that I know of is that associated at all is our seal and the mayor. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah, so the event that is being held on our property was, I wasn't aware of the other event at the time of that. So I can't speak to the one that's happening on, at the Glen Arden Community Center, but the event on this happening on the graphic, you know, on across from the police station, that is our, the city event, is using our space. The funding for the event, so the, the egg, the candy, et cetera, is coming from Zion Landover. They wanted to do something for the citizens, the residents of the Glen Arden community for Easter. And so that was what they approached with. This is, the event is for Glen Arden in that, like, they didn't even advertise it at the church for, you know, church members to sign up. Again, the idea was to bring the church's resources to the, the city. I did use a small portion of my miscellaneous account, less than a hundred dollars to buy like states to just say like Easter egg hunt this way, just a little bit of the core. But in terms of all of the refreshment, all of that, they, the Zion Landovers provide.
So we're just providing the space?
Yes.
Okay, I guess, I guess, I think one of the issues I, unfortunately, the mayor is not yet answered this, is again, you know, citizens saw the one extravaganza. You know, citizens saw the one extravaganza and. We've really got to get in the happiness in our postcards for these events because my citizens don't know what's going on. You know, they're like, we're having what? I said, is it Easter egg hunt on the eighth, you know, over on the grassy knoll and um. Behind the, um, the city hall and they're like, you know, oh, when did this happen? When are we going to hear about it? And again, we keep on relying on social media and people are not getting the information. And I think that in order for our people to participate, for everybody to be able to participate in these events, some kind of communication needs to go out and we can't just simply rely on social media. Because again, I'm getting a lot of questions from people like, when did this happen? Or when, I didn't hear about it. Um, you know, when you, why don't you mail out something, you know, you know, they don't look at the marquee, they can't read the marquee. I mean, all of that, all of that, and now we're looking at two, you know, um. Because I was wondering, I, I was wondering why I was up on the marquee twice. I thought, oh, well, you know, maybe they have a different design for it or what? I didn't even know about the mayor's event. Um, and I criticized her last time for the same thing, you know, having these events and not sending out anything to the neighborhood. You know, to have more people can uh participate, because I think a lot more people would participate if they knew, you know, what was going on in the community. So. Again, I mean, I, I, can I stress enough that it's important that we mail our stuff out? Because everybody, just like the lady that came to the last public meeting and said, I don't do social media, you know. So she don't do social media, so she won't know nothing about it, you know, and there's other people out here who don't do social media. They may want to bring their grandkids or the kids, you know, um. To the event and to the events that are happening. So I just wanted, I just want to throw it out there again because it's starting, for me, it's starting to be a problem. There was, we, we're having events and, and everybody cannot participate because they don't know about it and it's not being widely advertised and we're using social media as our main vehicle. For getting the information out to people. So, so we have a two.
Sorry, I, I don't know if I would say it was the main one. I know that Miss Ward. Sent out the communication and all the avenues that we, um, that we have. I know it was sent out in the newsletter. Um, the one that, you know, gets sent to people, I've seen that, but I, I will just say that I don't see. Um, an issue with there being two. Events, I think that the, the more um opportunities and activities there are for people in this area. You know, that, that's great. There was, um, when the. Evite was set up to, so that people could RSVP for tickets. There were a hundred and twenty five, those were sold out and I opened up another twenty five, so we. We have a lot of people who are attending and again, it wasn't advertised outside of the community. Um, but I mean, I hear what you're saying, Councilman Herring, I think that as you said, just in general, we should probably take a look at events and the cost of, um. You know, sending out, I know I personally never get those flyers until after the event, so they're not an effective means of communication for me and I don't know if the cost of. Um, doing them broadly to the whole city is worth it, maybe we can, um, you know, have a targeted list for those people who. Would prefer to have nailing done to them so that they can be mailed information. I don't know, but um I also, you know, just. I was hoping to keep this at as little cost to the city as possible, given that it wasn't a. It wasn't a budgeted event from when we created our budget for the year.
Well, I mean, but we have a line for community outreach in our budget, which, you know, you can send postcards and stuff from and usually if you mail a postcard first class, it's, it's like thirty seven cent. In order to get to the people in two weeks, so you got to give yourself a two week lag, two week lag time. If you mail it bulk, then you never know when they're going to get it.
Yeah, well, that was another thing. It was, it wasn't a whole lot of lead time on this either. I think it was only about three weeks ago.
Right, so yeah, so um, I'm just saying, I think we need to look at that. Um.
I think what we can do for next year certainly is put something now in the budget now that we know we have a partner in. Um, Zion Landover and they want to be involved, we can, you know, put together a budget so this can be a better planned event, you know, going forward. But I, I certainly didn't want to say, no, let's not do anything for the kids. Um, when something was being made available.
Okay, and, and I do, like I said, again, I, and like I said, it is two separate events and I know, um, you know, I. I, I don't know how people want to distinguish between which one they want to go to, which one they registered for, you know, um, unless they get clear directions on where to go. Because a lot of times if they come up, if they come up Glen Arden Parkway and they see the events going on over there, that's where they're going to go. You know, when they see everything over there, that's where they want to go, so.
Well, I, as someone with a five-year-old. It doesn't take long to do an Easter egg hunt, to hunt for some eggs, and it would not be a problem to go to both for, for me.
Hmm.
So, I mean, I, I, I mean, I just think it's, I think it's a. We should count it a blessing that in our city that, you know, whomever has resources to bring here so that our children can, you know, have something fun to do, to celebrate.
Well, I just think, you know, some communication need to be had and we should have just did one as a city of Glen Arden instead of splitting it up, you know, but, you know, I know, I don't, and, you know, we know how we have things on this. You know, when it comes down to some of the elected bodies in the community, they want to do their own thing. You know, and calling out no names, so you know, I know that probably won't ever happen. But I think that's what we should try to work towards, doing one for the whole community, because if you can do. You know, two separate ones and for a hundred kids each, you can do one for two hundred and fifty kids. And have a, you know, pull everybody together as a community instead of separating, because that seems like what, what is going, what's going to happen, but. Um, yeah, that was just my concern.
Landing would be, you know, ideal.
Yeah, you know, but I know what, you know, you know what we're dealing with, so. All right, that's it for me, um, on the mayor's report. I don't have, I have nothing else on, on any other reports, um. Yeah, I'm done.
Council President, may I?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gill, uh, I was muted, but go ahead.
Okay, no, it's okay. A lot of the things that were stated that I wanted to say was already stated, so I'll just quickly state that. It was, um, both events were advertised in the April to June newsletter side by side. And I think, and this is to, um. Councilman Herring's point, which I, I do, I, I will say that I did get calls from different citizens who were confused. Because they saw the city seal on both flyers right next to each other, so. And it's also at the same time, I think, um, and again, not trying to have this conversation last any longer than it already has. But I think, again, similar to what Councilman Herring said and others, I'm following suit, I will not mention any names, but. Even if communication was had, maybe where it could be Easter egg hunt for one event from eleven to one and another one from one to three, or however it was, then it would be. More bang for the buck or just one event like was stated, but just wanted to say that a lot of the confusion, at least on my end, came from phone calls. Um, and I, and I can, at least I don't want to mention, throw this person in there, but I did reach out to Council Vice President at one point and say, did you get another flyer? Because I'm seeing something else here, um, about the event and I'm seeing the seal. So I think. In the interest of time, I'll stop speaking, but I also want, would like later on, not today specifically, for us to discuss the usage of the city seal. Um, if it's a city event, city sponsored event, I get it being used, but if it's us individually doing things. Um, when I say us, I mean, individual elected officials, um, non-legislative or whatever, we should really talk about that to avoid confusion.
I agree, and when I reached out to, um, Acting City Manager Chief Bryant at the time. Um, I did not know that there was another event going on at that time, if, if so, I wouldn't, you know. I don't think any of us would have moved forward with anything, um, and I think that if Chief Bryant had known, he would have let me know that there was another event, so I think we need to, um. I, I think in addition to what you said in terms of like the city seal and, and the, um. You know, the process by which we describe something as a city event, we also need to, uh. Have some sort of governance over what you posted to the city website.
Yes, so I, I, I think what I'm hearing is we have o- other types of conversation for another meeting, not necessarily tonight. But again, I just want to be clear, like if it's Councilwoman Guillaume that's doing an event, I, I wouldn't use the seal, but that's just because it's not a city sponsored event, but if it's. You know, the city of Glen Arden and I just happen to be the, the, the host, one or part of the hosting committee or just individual, or just me by myself representing the city, that's different, but. I'll be quiet now.
Uh huh, thank you. I, I did want to add that I had, um, concerns about that also, and I had, um, plan on, um. Maybe reaching out to, uh, we, we do need to have some kind of language or something, uh, written standard codes or something as to, um. The use of the seal, because sometimes the seal can be used and, you know, alongside with someone and we, you know, we don't even know. You know, they could have a font or something like that, I'm just keeping it real, you know, we don't know everybody, um, and they could be doing something else and our sale is there, we don't even, um. You know, uh, agree with what they do or, or, you know, what they represent, so I was, um, planning on maybe trying to, um. Compare with, uh, the attorney to see if there's something that he could come up with or just get his take on that and then maybe we could put something in place. Because, um, I, you know, to freely use the seal on any and everything, I, I, I have a problem with that. And, and you know, especially on events that do not benefit. The, the city at all. And there have been cases where that, in this case, you know, these are, they are benefiting the city, but they, the sale has been on events that. Is in New York, in Virginia, everywhere, and it doesn't that, um, benefit the city, so. We're gonna look into that and see what he suggests, if any. I did speak with the, um. City manager, um, a little bit and, um. And found out that it could be trademark, but there's something we can do, do a ordinance or something, so. That's all, um, Councilman Harrison.
Hey, so I had a question on, when we doing events as a collective, like how we, are we like working together when we doing events? Are we just throwing events? I'm trying to figure out how like council members are getting information or, you know, how is it that we can, um, help out or give a hand if we wanted to? Because like I didn't know nothing about this until I, I, till I seen a flyer. And if I missed it, I apologize, but, um, if somebody mentioned it, but I didn't know nothing about it. But I would like to attend as much stuff as I can, but like sometimes I catch it on social media when it comes to social media, so like when we. You know, I, I just know for me, but in particular, like when we doing events, I try to make sure I include everybody that's on the board when I'm doing something, so I just wanted to know like. Like how we going about things, we like, you know, when we having stuff, and I know everybody got their own events that they have and they throw, but. As somebody can like leave something in my inbox or something like that, I love to, um, be able to. Make sure that I'm at everything that somebody's having or throwing into support.
I appreciate that, Councilman Harrison. I thought I had, I usually always do, I try to keep you all informed of the things that I'm working on, so if I missed that, that was a miss on my part, but. I know that, um, it definitely wasn't intentional, um, so. Yeah, that, when the opportunity was put in again, it was really, it was like three weeks ago, it wasn't a long time, um. And so I was like, well, this sounds like a great idea for this city, um. And reached out to Acting City Manager Chief Bryant at the time about this space and like what we're leaving from this call.
Okay, thanks.
Madam President?
Um, I think I think our Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman. Guillaume Hannah.
Yes, thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President. I won't, I promise again, I won't take long. I think to Councilman Hairston's point, it's, to me, it's even broader, if, if I may. I feel that there are events that people who are coming into the city want to have and they are notifying certain arms of the city. But that arm isn't communicating with the legislative body, so what it appears like at the end is there are no council members there. But the council members didn't know about the event or they heard about it late in the game, so I think this is universal where. All parties, whether it's the administrative function or the legislative arm, if there is an event that's going to be had, let's just make sure that. The entire body, both bodies, that is, know what's going on, so we can avoid different things from being set stated about other arms of the body. That's it.
Thank you, um, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, and, and I actually have another question, but I do want to echo what Councilwoman Guillaume said, but I think the council has been very good about. Sharing information about the events that we're having, when we're having and letting administration know that we are having, so you know, I think we're doing what we need to do. Um, but another question, uh, since we're talking about events and that's to the chief about the daddy daughter dance, what? I mean, I had, I got a little bit of information on that, um, and I talked to Sergeant Richardson, but can you give me an overview of what that's about? Because a lot of people are actually questioning what is, what is it about and what does it entails? Because it's called a sneaker ball, so could you expound on that?
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, everyone. How y'all doing? Uh, pretty much, um, it's an event that Sergeant Richardson came up with. He said he's been, um, contemplating it for, um, a couple of years now. And basically what it is, is to get the fathers more involved in their kid's life. And have them, you know, father the role model for the kids, so, um, he came with that, um, event. To get the parents involved, especially the father with the daughters and stuff, and having to come out like, well, you know, like a prom night. On just, um, getting the fathers in their daughter lives earlier, earlier, you know, before marriage and all the type of stuff. And, um, the sneaker part came in, um, with the young kids these days, um, a lot of them go to proms and different events and stuff. Um, they wear like, uh, tuxedos, um. Uh, fashion dresses and stuff, but they, they wear tennis shoes with it, so that's more the theme for the younger generation. Um, so that's pretty much what it's all about in reference to that.
Okay, and it's free, right?
Uh, yes, um, only thing he's doing is he's asking people to, uh, register so he can get a counter to people in the city of Glen Arden. That's attended, we want to make sure that, you know, it's for the residents of Glen Arden, so, um. That's the way.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, so he just want to make sure that, um, we got citizens in the city Glen Arden involved, so he has like a, a registration, um. Information out, I think it's on their site.
So, um. Now, if someone doesn't have social media, how would they want, how would they be able to attend? Will they, can they call the town hall? Will they register them? What? How would they do that if they know about it? Because again, this is another event, you know, as I told you, you know, I sent you the postcard, um.
Yes, sir.
Sample, if you could have probably, probably mailed out, but I mean, people are asking about it, I mean, because they really don't know what's going on, you know, again.
Right, so, uh, uh, and, and your information was very valuable and I appreciate that, um, I got with him about it and that, and, um. The dollar value seven hundred, um, for this being the first time in the timeframe, um, we didn't think it would be, um, beneficial for us at this first one. Um, as far as, um, sending it out with it, for that amount of money for the short period of time, trying to get it out. So, um, it, this first one is going to be more like a, um, you know, touch and go, see how it goes, how it turns out and so forth. So, um, I'll be reaching out to him also to see what other avenues he'd be utilizing to make sure that citizens are involved, um. I know he's putting it on the police Facebook page also, but, uh, like you said before, people that don't have, um, that's not on social media. Um, I'll see what avenues he is using to, um, make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess my thing is this, honestly, chief, it, you, if you mail a post, if you mail the cards out, it takes two weeks to get there. In, in, within two weeks, all the cards get out. You, if you mail them on a Monday first class, you need to get them in three days, you know, so I think that, um. It's something should have been done, because again, this is a city event, we're spending city tax dollars and everybody should be able to participate in these events. And not have to rely strictly on social media and registration to be able to attend. Um, or be able to say whether they don't attend, they should know what's going on in their city and know that we are putting on events for them, because they, I would almost hand that the city doesn't do anything. But we are doing things, but they just don't know about it. So that's, 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 again, that's my concern, these, this is taxpayers' money, if people pay their tax dollars, they should know what's going on in their city. So I don't think, even if it was a short term, uh, short turn around to get those cards out, they should have still went out, I feel. To these citizens so that they know that this is coming up, because somebody may want to take that, they may, may want the opportunity to take their daughter to an event like this, because I think it's a very positive event. Where little girls can see, be with their dad and have that communication and a connection, you know, so, um. Again, I, I think.
I agree, and, and, and we're looking at the seven hundred dollars too coming out, uh, the budget, because I think it's another, we got a couple of other events coming up before. I think he had one other event that might be coming up before the budget and I think the seven hundred dollars kind of like, uh, pushed us over. So we're looking at that too, so, but I totally agree and, uh. Soon as you gave me that information, I shared it with him and he like, uh, you know, so yeah, uh, for the future, we make sure that we get, have enough money budgeted to get these things out. Because we already know the events that we usually have every year, so I must definitely appreciate it and we utilize.
When is it?
Oh, it's, should be April twenty second.
April twenty second, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Okay, Hearing Man. We have a discussion. Councilwoman Jones, did you want to go here with your, the letter of March tenth?
Sure. I just wanted to try to get some information. I tried reaching out to the homeowners association president. I haven't gotten a call back from him. I was wondering if any of the other council had reached out or maybe Councilman Herring, you're in Ward one, have they reached out to you and can you give us any information pertaining to that?
Yes, I actually did reach out to him and he called me about maybe about a week ago. So I can give you an update on that. Basically, he was concerned because he felt that the legislation that we passed actually took the rights of the homeowner away, of the homeowners association away when it came to their streets. And I told him, no, the ordinance only requires the city to maintain the streets, you know, for potholes or whatever and snow plowing. But all the HOA rules stay in effect. And he was just like, okay, good, because they're trying to get a parking permit thing over there also. So that was his biggest concern was that he thought that because we accepted their streets, that their HOA rules no longer apply. And I'm like, no, your HOA rules, HOA rules still applies. And so I'm looking for the legislation now to send it to him so he can have something to stand on when he decides to put these permits in place. And citizens don't say, you know, they belong to the, the streets belong to the city. No, the streets belong to the HOA. We just maintain them. So the rules still apply. And he said, that was his biggest thing, because they have a lot of same thing with dealing with a lot of other streets, you know. If, I don't know if you noticed, when you ride by and now you see cars parked up on the entranceway. That's because it's so overcrowded and people are parking in the visitor spaces and in other people's spaces, so they really don't have any room over there. So you want to affect a parking permit program through the HOA, which is, you know, much easier than going to the city. So that's where we are with that. Yep.
Yeah, because I was looking for that ordinance also, and I was not able to find that. And also while we're on that, can I ask one other question of the the cell sites? We haven't received any information pertaining to that either. And I saw in the mayor's report where you all had another meeting with a party to discuss that. But as a councilperson, I haven't seen any information pertaining to that.
Now, we assume that the mayor sent it to you. Because I was asking the same thing. She's like, oh, yeah, it's in my email. So I say, okay, so you want to, so she says she was going to send it to the rest of the council. But we, I have not had any other meetings with that, with that group. Isn't that, she put in her thing that she had another meeting with them, then it was not with me. And I don't know if Councilman Harrison met with them or not, but I don't think so, because normally she reached out to both of us at the same time. So I know I haven't had any other meeting with, with, with Crown, Clark, Crown or Crown Clark or wherever they are, whoever they're called. Yeah, I haven't had any other meetings with them. So if she's met with them, she met with them on her own. Because I mean, I just, I just, I just wanted to, I just had to emphasize with the chief that no permit can be issued for these things until they come before the council for approval. So again, I don't know anything about another meeting.
Okay, so she's saying accomplished on the resolution council actions, met with Councilman Herring and Harrison and Heather McComb from the Crown Castle team evolution. So she's just repeating something? She's, this is a repeat in her, from a prior mayor's report?
Yeah, it must be, because we did not, we did not, I know we did not meet with her, meet with anyone else again. Again, like, I don't know why she put that in her report again. Maybe she's, like you say, reemphasizing a previous report. Because there was not another meeting. I haven't talked to him.
She said you identified cellular receptivity. So, I mean, this is what she's saying that you all did. Improvement zones. And I identified cellular receptivity. So I mean, that's what, that's, okay, that's what's in her report. So I was just wondering. And like I said, I yet to receive any documentation pertaining to.
I'll forward to the whole council. I thought she had already forwarded to y'all. So I'll forward it to y'all tonight.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Fareed.
Sorry, I was, I was waving my hand before you didn't see me. I just wanted to confirm that the the Easter event was mailed out. It was in the newsletter that was mailed out last month. So citizens should have received it in the mail as well, information about the event, as well as the April fifteenth literacy day. That's also in that mailer. So I don't know, I guess that's what I was asking you before, Councilman Herring. If you're saying that in addition to those things, we should have individual postcards for events? Or should we just be utilizing, you know, this mailer we have for all of them?
I'm gonna tell you, I, I just feel that you should probably do the postcards too, because a lot of people I talked to don't really read the newsletters. Like, it's a lot and the print is small and they end up reading it. So, I mean, it goes out, you know, but I don't know if, if, you know, everybody's reading it. And, you know, because I got it and I looked through it and I didn't see that. But you know, again, I mean, I always do postcards because I feel it's an effective way to let them know exactly what's going on with this council in the events that we are actually hosting. And I would like to get, like, I would like to have them come out to them. So, me, yeah, so.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just speaking to the meeting with the mayor. I haven't met with her more than the time that we had met with her that one time. And I think she may just be reenterating that meeting that we already had.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, persons? And now we will go to city manager, Habitus Chief on the Gold Room, interviews personnel and council direction.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
The question that I have after talking to staff and talking to President Curtis is looking for council direction on going forward with hiring personnel for the Gold Room, the coordinator, the crew. I'm hearing differing, getting a different picture that perhaps the crew members are folks that the city manager hires, but the coordinator is hired by the council on just needing some direction. And clarity.
Anyone want to touch that? I I don't see any problem with the city manager doing the, I mean, doing the hiring of the Gold Room and we do our part after that. Anyone have anything? Councilman Harrison.
No, my hand is still up.
Okay. Councilwoman, Gion.
I actually, thank you, Council President. I actually agree with city manager Habit. I do think that it would make better sense, since she's going to be the, the city manager is the person who will be supervising the Golden Coordinator. So I do think that it would be best if they were the ones to lead those efforts.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones.
I agree with Councilwoman Gion and yourself as if the city manager is, I'm sorry, if the Golden Coordinator and, well, the, the the crew and all of that would be just regular employees, so that's no issue. But the Golden Coordinator, if it's going to be an issue where we have to come up with a resolution and do a interview, then then it falls back into council's hands. But to, like, Councilwoman Gion has stated, and I believe that the Golden Coordinator is going to be under the supervision of the city manager, then she could go ahead and hire the person and get that out of the way.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, but the Golden Rule says that the coordinator will be appointed by the council. So I have no problem with the, like you say, the city manager doing the legwork. You know, going through the resumes and everything else to bring them on board, because that's normally what happens. And they just bring us her pick. And we can follow, follow up that way. I mean, I don't feel we set to go through and interview them, I mean, all over again, you know, if that's what she wants to do. It'll make it a little bit more efficient. Once she go through, because they're going to be working for her. And I think they'll get it, it'll get the Golden Coordinator a better understanding that she works under the city manager and not under the council. Which I think sometimes gets confusing. So that's it for me.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay. Just now here. So, and then we, now we have the fiscal year twenty four budget update code. Again, city manager.
Just to give you a heads up that in the, just under three weeks since I've been here, I've looked at gone through the budget except for one group, and that's American Rescue Planet. We haven't reviewed that together, Dean Stewart and I. But I wanted to give you all a heads up that I'm planning to pull code enforcement operations back under the city manager. And I'm looking to, and I'm going to be proposing a manager position for code enforcement that would train staff on, and arrange for a special certification training for code enforcement staff. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that you'll see that in the upcoming budget. With code coming back under the city manager and proposing a code manager position to assist in supervising code staff.
So that would be an added full-time employee?
Yes.
Position?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, thank you, Council President. So, Ms. Habit, that would also include looking at the business licenses and bringing those up to speed. Would that, would he also be in, let's say, rental properties? Would that person be, that position that you want to bring in? Would that include, would it include those things? What other job duties have you identified for this person to perform?
The position would be focused on rental licensing, business licenses. If there are vacant buildings and vacant properties, a license fee would be proposed to give an incentive to the, to the folks who have, may have vacant buildings to have them occupied. And any land that is vacant land that is creating problems for code, that requires any grass cutting by Public Works as abatements, there would be a fee proposed for addressing vacant buildings in vacant land. That represents a cost to the city in terms of dealing with the grass cutting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gion.
Thank you, Council President. City manager Habit, if when the time comes, if you can just keep me abreast, I mean, while you keep the council abreast, of course, if you and I, let's connect offline, because we did pass legislation, the council passed legislation almost a year ago, the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund, where it's heavily based on code compliance and homes that are struggling, households that are struggling and are on limited income. So specifically the aging population, veterans, et cetera, et cetera. So if you and I can touch base when, we'll, I'll communicate with you offline, but I would like to know more about the city, the code manager position and how we can try to expedite and work together, the legislative body and administration, to make sure that the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund is applied. And also, we do have, and I'm sure, I'm pretty sure you've probably been made aware of this, but we did get, go into a contract with the Opera Fund Project Manager. So maybe when the time comes, we can collectively just get together, just to make sure that the money gets to the households that are in need from a code compliance perspective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next would be constant yield deadline. I'll try for Mr. Dean Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. I want to bring to your attention that the constantly yield deadline will be on May twenty fifth, and that's the day when I'm planning to send the information or transmit the information for the, the rate that we are planning for the tax charges for next fiscal year. The constant yield as it stands right now is point three two seven three for each one hundred dollars of assessment that is done to properties in the city of Glen Arden. Right now, between myself and the president has been discussing what rate we would consider. And we were suggesting between him and myself that we could stay at the rate that it was for fiscal year twenty twenty three. But for that, I'll have to give you more analysis as to tell you what the difference would be between, you know, one rate to the other as it relate to different assessments of property. One like what we did last year, where we look at different values and what the difference in cost would be. And in most cases, these costs are generally small amounts between, you know, thirteen to thirty-two dollars, between a two hundred thousand to a five hundred thousand dollar property. But I'll do more analysis to give you more information on that. But the deadline, I should repeat, I will be sending this information to the Department of Finance to county on May twenty fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, lastly, we have the city manager.
Madam President.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilman Herring.
Yeah, just have a question for the treasurer. So so we need to make a decision. We need to follow all the proper protocol to make a decision on what we're going to do, correct, Mr. Stewart?
Exactly.
Take it out, or we're going to keep, or we're going to keep it?
Right, you're, you're exactly right. And I have been going through the numbers up to today, and I think I need another day with the city manager to make sure that we cover all bases to determine whether it's fair to just stay at the rate that it is. And, and maybe lean more on reserves. And that too, we'll have to discuss between ourselves and the council to determine whether we should, you know, consider going into reserves to, you know, ensure that we don't burden the residents too much.
Well, I, I, okay, yeah, because that, that does need to be a discussion, because, I mean, the trash went up almost forty thousand dollars. You know, that went up forty thousand dollars and we got to pay for it somehow. And I think that, you know, if we continue not taking advantage of the assessments that are being, that's on a, that's being passed along on real property, then we're going to, we're going to end up hurting ourselves. In two thousand and eight, when the housing market bubble burst, the only thing to save Glen Arden was our reserves. We didn't have to lay off anybody. We didn't have to cut any services. We were able to function as we did previously before that bubble burst, because the money that we got after that bubble burst was way less than what we had gotten in the previous years, you know, when everything was overappreciated. And while other municipalities had to lay people off, cut services and everything else, so tapping into the reserves, everything. Um, and while other municipalities had to lay people off, cut services and everything else, so tapping into the reserves every time you turn around, I think is a bad idea. Um, we really need to, you know, you gotta pay for your services, you need to, we need to look at that. I think we've kept the, the rate down for the last two years, we really need to seriously look at main, I mean, bringing in additional income. Especially to cover uh, cover that um, that trash, the trash contract. And also, we were talking about bringing in uh, new employees, we need to continue a revenue stream for that, so, but that's a discussion for down the road, so. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we had, that we were clear that we had to go through the state required procedures in order to move forward with the constant yield, whichever way we go.
Exactly, and we will be doing that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Herring, um. Chief Bryant, did he have his hand up?
Oh yes, real quick, um, I was to do a quick follow-up in reference to the father-daughter dance. Um, I understand that um, sergeant had flies printed and taken to the elementary schools and had the principal uh, distribute them to students to take home to their parents. So, but we will be using the other um, avenue, if, in the future, using postcards and stuff, so I just want to give that quick update.
Thank you. Okay, um. City Manager Habba?
Okay, thank you, uh, the um, items under the briefing. Uh, the first one is the replacement of a, a Public Works truck, uh, it is a um, an older two thousand and five vehicle. Uh, we are uh, looking at getting onto a, a governmental uh, contract, uh, either through the state, uh, through uh, the state of Maryland. Um, and we have identified two different uh, companies that were determining which government contracts they may have that we can ride on. And with your indulgence, we would like to present that information in time uh, for the public hearing in a resolution. So that uh, you'll have that information, uh, we're still trying to pin down who uh, the two uh, actually have state contracts that sell trucks. We know that one of them sells patrol vehicles, uh, the other, both of them are supposed to sell trucks, but um, we have not firmed up yet who actually has anything in their inventory. So um, with, with your indulgence, we would like to present that for the public hearing. Unless, of course, the two do not have any trucks in inventory, in which case uh, we will keep looking for a governmental source, so that we don't have to take the time to do uh, bid packages to try to bid for a F three fifty Ford truck replacement. Um, if I may, uh, go to the next item. Um, Vice President, uh. Okay, um, for the street paving and sidewalk improvements, uh, we have um, looked at two uh, road contracts that the county has with two vendors. Uh, and um, we just today got the uh, unit pricing for both of them. Uh, we haven't had time to, uh, you know, between this morning and this evening to run the numbers on the unit pricing for both of them, uh, for both sidewalk improvements, the concrete work and the paving. The intent is to present to you at the public session, the um, recommendation based on the um, total um, cost of the street paving and the sidewalk improvements. Um, and it would, uh, what we're focused on again is uh, two companies that have uh, already been awarded an indifferent quantities contract with Prince George's County. So with your indulgence, we would like to present that at the public hearing uh, in a resolution form, assuming that um, we are, uh, have our, our numbers lined up and there isn't a tie or something weird like that with these contracts. Um, if I may move to the next item?
You may.
Um, the open space grant submission date was a request that came from a council member, Councilmember Fareed. Um, there are two uh, programs, grant programs in the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. One is the Community Playground Grant, uh, it opens up in May. The uh, applications are due in August, but the, the um, the um, award date isn't till the following June, um, which is unfortunate. In terms of the open space grants, um, the state open space grants are handled by Prince George's County. We would not need to go through Prince George's County uh, to find out their um, uh, their rules for handling uh, uh, the uh, Program Open Space Funds for development projects. What I've seen so far is uh, uh, some smaller grants that go through open space. Uh, even for some of the larger municipalities, which is quite discouraging. So, some more research needs to be done on that, uh, in order to firm up the information for Councilmember Fareed's um, interest in, in that question that I'm still trying to finalize with uh, Prince George's County staff. And my final item is that so far I've met with five council members to get uh, a sense of your pri, priorities uh, for uh, things you want to see happen in the city. And I'm still uh, trying to um, have a meeting with um, Councilmember Harrison and Councilmember Fareed, if uh, you could be in touch with the council clerk uh, to try to arrange a time when it would be convenient for you to meet with me um, by Zoom or in person, whichever is, is um, you're able to do. And thank you very much, um, for your time.
Thank you, City Manager, have a, any other comments, concerns, questions?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes, uh, Councilman Herring?
I just want to let Councilor Jeff forward the information from Crown Council, so let me know if you didn't get it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, alright.
Everyone good? Okay, well, the time is eight twenty P M. This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, thank you citizens.
Thank you.